As long as this doesn't count as a delayed departure. Against me.
All right, I think we're good now.
Are we good?
Yes, we're good now.
Okay, I'd like to convene tonight's. Like to convene tonight's meeting in memory of Gilroy icon Sig Sanchez, who passed away Saturday night at the age of 100. Sig was a farmer who then dedicated 55 years of his life to public service directly related to Gilroy. He was a Gilroy City Council person, he was a Gilroy mayor, he was on the County Board of Supervisors representing Gilroy's District, District One, and Water Board District One. Please join me in sending our condolences to his family. And in memory of all that he did for Gil- for Gilroy, we'll have a brief period of silence. Thank you. With that, Councilmember Tovar, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, thank you. Everybody please stand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America. And to the public, which is.
Undergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, invocation, do we have Pastor Malcolm McPhail here from New Hope Community Church?
He was just calling me, maybe he couldn't get on.
Well, I see him on now, you're on mute, Malcolm.
So, okay, thank you. You got me?
Yes.
Good, good, good. I'll just talk, I only got Marie on my phone, so Marie, I'm talking to you, but I'm looking, I'm seeing the whole council there. Hey, I just want to say first of all, Happy New Year to everybody. We chaplains and pastors in our community counted a great privilege to be a part of the invitation for the council and we pray for you often. And I wanted to also say thank you so much for your service and for your dedication to our community, to our city, especially in challenging times. And so with that, let's bow our heads in a moment of prayer. Dear Lord, I stopped for a moment to pray and ask that you would be with our leaders, our city council members, our mayor. Lord, our first responders in our community, Lord, as a whole collectively, may we, may we guide our city and protect our city and in safety, Lord, may we protect our city from, from the outside evils that would try to penetrate our community and from the, even from the the evil within that would try to penetrate our community. Or keep our officers safe and our firefighters safe as they go forward. We also pray for wisdom for the city council members as they navigate difficult times and what the future looks like and through the uncertainties that we all feel. Lord, and may we be reminded to honor your scripture that says that we are to act justly, to love mercy and to walk humbly. So, Lord, I pray that you will do that over our city and over our city council members tonight. In Christ's name I pray, amen and amen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marie, I'm glad you guys got me on.
All right, thank you.
Take care.
All right, City Clerks report on posting the agenda and roll call.
Madam Mayor, tonight's agenda was posted on January 28th at 10:00 a.m. Suzanne, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Councilmember Armandaris.
Here.
Councilmember Bracco.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember LaRomaine Yost.
Present.
Councilmember Marx.
Here.
Councilmember Tovar.
Here.
Mayor Blankley. Here. Thank you. Okay. Orders of the day. I don't always ask if there's anything I, okay, I'm gonna move on from that. All right, all council members are participating remotely pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order, number N 2920, in order to minimize the spread of the COVID-19 virus. The meeting is being livestreamed from the city website, cityofgilroy.org, and is viewable on cable channel 17 and on Facebook Live. Public comments can be made during the meeting by watching the meeting online and calling 669-900-6833. Enter ID 850-9284-6853 and passcode 874934. Or logging into Zoom at rb.gy/cz9jsi and enter passcode 874934. When I call the item you wish to speak on, press star nine on your telephone keypad or use the raise your hand icon. Okay, moving on to proclamations, awards, and presentations. I have some certificates of appreciation for outgoing board, commission, and committee members. You will be mailed your certificates, but here I'm just going to announce the names by commission and thank you all for your service. So from the Arts and Culture Commission, we have Maricela Andrade, Wendy Su Kissa, and Marika Samergi. From the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission, we have Lionel Gonzalez, Zachary Hilton, and Chad Reader. From the Building Board of Appeals, we have Patricia Giordano and Stephanie Okada McCabe. From the Historic Heritage Committee, we have Joseph Robinson. From the Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, we have Brenda Flores, Manny Singh, Santos Cortez, and Jennifer Del Bono. From the Library Commission, Candace Whitney. From the Open Government Commission, Allison Beach, James Weaver. From Parks and Rec Commission, Marcos Gonzalez. From the Physically Challenged Board of Appeals, Stephanie Okada McCabe. From the Planning Commission, Casey Astorga, Peter Fleming, and Sam Kim. And lastly, the Youth Commission, Brian Alonso, Kenneth Apte, Senna Colagotla, Edwin Lopez, Vikash Saberwall, Paul Song, Jane Tovar, and Elizabeth Van Sambique. Thank you all for your service. Little bit of clap?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Do you have a member of the public who would like to speak? And I believe it's one of our former Arts and Culture Commissioners.
Wonderful.
Okay, Wendy, we are letting you in.
Very nice, I just wanted to say thank you that this was really very nice to be invited back. And I just really, really appreciate all that the council is doing and thank you for inviting us to come and be a part of this.
Thank you, thanks for being here. Are there any others? Shauna? Or Suzanne?
I guess we have Sam Kim.
Okay.
Good evening, congratulations on the new council members and the returning council members and particularly congratulations to Mayor Blankley. It was an honor and privilege serving on the Planning Commission. I learned to love the city of Gilroy and I'm back in Washington State now where it's raining constantly and it's cold and I miss the city terribly. So hopefully I'll be back one of these days. Thank you so much for the privilege of having served the city.
Thank you. Are there others?
That is the only other public comment.
Oh, okay. All right, well, thank you again, everybody, for serving. All right. Presentations to the council. This is a public comment by members of the public on items not on the agenda but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. So Shauna or Suzanne, are there any public comments?
If you have a public comment, please raise your hand, or dial star nine now. Madam Mayor, we have no public comments on items not on tonight's agenda.
Great, okay, thank you. Reports of council members, Councilmember Bracco.
I have no report, I just want to send my condolences to the Sanchez family.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Armandaris.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor. Also, my condolences to the family of Sig Sanchez. It's such a loss for our community. And I also want to remind us that today marks the beginning of Black History Month and to celebrate the contributions and achievements of black Americans and remind us that black history is American history and that it should last more than a month, right? It's, we celebrate those things every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Marx.
Yes, I too would like to send my condolences to the Sanchez family. Sig was quite an icon here in Gilroy. Last week, the Homeless Ad Hoc Committee met with some homeless people to learn about their experiences living on the streets. They shared how difficult it is to get to county services when these services are only offered in San Jose. How difficult it is to go to work when showers are not available. When laundry service is only offered once a week and mainly how unsafe living in the encampments are at night because of the violence. I attended a webinar this past Thursday on how to create safe parking lots for people living in their cars. Please keep in mind that the city council cannot mandate any property owner to turn his lot into a safe parking lot. But if anyone listening is interested in learning more about it, please contact me through my city cellphone or city email and I will be glad to share my notes with you. This ad hoc committee, which began in December of 2020, has only had four meetings and we are still in the fact gathering stages and will be finished gathering information by the end of February. On February 11th, Destination Home is coming to speak with us so we can learn exactly what this nonprofit can do for the homeless on a regular basis in Gilroy. On the 25th, we will be speaking with our local agencies to discuss what these agencies do and what more can be done to help the situation. I read with interest this past weekend the comments on Nextdoor implying the council was not doing anything and did not care. I can assure you, there is not one person on this council that does not care. However, we do not have a magic wand to wave over Gilroy and correct these horrendous living conditions, I wish we did. What we all can do is start to pressure the county and state and ask questions on how taxpayer money is being spent in Gilroy. Is there more the county and state can do for us? And if so, we need to let the county and state know exactly what we need. Housing, counseling services, rehab homes and buildings. And job training would go a long way in turning these lives around. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor Blankley, just a couple of updates. There's a program that I wanted everyone to know about called Gilroy Bike Match. And Gilroy bicycles are essential transportation for many who need to get around during COVID-19 outbreak. This might include traveling to essential jobs, running crucial errands, or participating in mutual aid for vulnerable people, vulnerable people who cannot leave their homes. This group is coordinating and connecting Gilroy residents that have an extra bike in their garages to check their side yards as well. Please, let's see, please check those side yards and garages for bikes in working conditions and it'll be matched with someone that needs one. Stats to date are, we've had 83 bikes so far donated, 90 participants, and there's been 83 matches. All details are online by searching Bike Match Gilroy. I also want to give a special thanks to Destination Home, who's provided $1.4 million in rent relief to Gilroy residents since the pandemic started in last March. They're a strong partner who is providing direct assistance to our residents. And also thank you to the members of Gilroy Ashmead Local 101, especially to the Streets Division right now, who are working hard with limited staffing in order to keep our sewer lines functional. And then a heads up to my council colleagues, staff, and public that I'll be introducing the Slow Streets Program, which reduces traffic volume and speed on low-volume streets to a minimum so that people can walk, bike, and run safely during COVID-19 on a future council initiated agenda item at our February 22nd meeting. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, first of all, I want to send my condolences to the Sig Sanchez family. Also, thank you to Councilmember Marx on your report regarding our homeless ad hoc committee. Well said, thank you for that. I do have something else to share on behalf of myself and my fellow council members and all of the city staff. I want to wish our mayor a very happy birthday. Our birthday is this Thursday.
Fourth.
Happy birthday. Again, thank you for your brave and fearless leadership. I hope you have a day of lots and lots of rest on your birthday. So happy birthday, Mayor Blankley. Still, we're not done, so if you guys will all join me in singing happy birthday here, I got the music. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Marie.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks. I didn't want to spoil your birthday with my singing, but happy birthday.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. All right, Councilmember LaRomaine Yost, hopefully you had a great birthday last week.
I did have a great birthday and it's, it's great for me to also extend you the birthday wishes as well for you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of, a couple of items. Certainly wishing all the best to the Sanchez family. I had the chance to meet Sig many, many years ago and he's been a fixture in our city here. So we were lucky to have him and he definitely left a very positive impact on everybody he interacted with. Couple of quick reports. The Valley Water District met last week. I serve as our representative on that, on that commission. The Water District is considering a rate increase to fund delayed improvements to Anderson Dam and water infrastructure. This is something that they are looking at for later this spring. I did speak to the issue during the meeting and asked that in consideration of any rates that they ultimately are looking at, that they remember that South County has some of the lowest income areas in the county and we also have some of the highest areas for agricultural production. So given that, that their rate structure, if there is a change, should take those factors into account and they seem, they seem to have heard that. The proposal that has been presented thus far does have South County with the lowest rates in the county. But that will, we'll wait to see what the final result of that is when they make their decision this spring. Secondly, the Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability Authority met this past week. That is the body that oversees all the communications networks for the different law enforcement and emergency responders throughout our county. There is a new mandate from our, from our statewide law enforcement that all communications for law enforcement must be encrypted when they, when they include personally identifiable information. And some cities in the county are already working to do that through this system. I'm happy to report that Gilroy, being as technologically savvy as we are, all of ours through SVRIA are already encrypted, so we're ahead of the game there.
Yay, thank you. Good to hear. Okay, my, my report is just on one thing since we just met last week. The only meeting that I attended was, that I need to report on is Gilroy Economic Development Partnership. And that's the one for everybody that was, it was created last year. It has three initiatives to help us with economic recovery. And the first one is the sports park, city-owned property, trying to get that developed with ice rinks operated by the Sharks and seeking investors. The second is the 536 acres at Gilroy Gardens, also city-owned property. We have, we're waiting until February 12th to get all the responses, to know of all the responses we're getting to the RFP that we sent out. And thirdly is Formay Alley, which is not city-owned property. So that's the difference between that one and the other two. That one requires the cooperation of the majority of the property owners between Fourth and Seventh Streets. That's what that one is hopefully going to do for them to participate in the improvements. So with that, I just want to tell everyone that I did ask Leanne to give me everybody's birthday so that I could make sure and go through the whole year acknowledging everybody. So Peter happened already, Shauna was on January 9th. And before, before, so happy birthday Shauna, okay.
Thank you very much.
And coming up before our next meeting is Zach Hilton on February 13th. I did not know, we have three council members who are all Aquarius, you guys, so whatever that, I know, whatever that means.
Happy birthday Zach.
Yeah, so I just wanted to give that, give that shout out of happy birthdays. I'm going to try to do that as we go throughout the year. Okay. Moving on to future council-initiated agenda items. Does any council member wish to propose something for a future agenda?
I do.
Okay, Councilmember Armandaris.
Sure. Um, so given the amount of, given the impact that COVID has had on our community, you know, we have a disparate amount of deaths and infections in our, in Gilroy as compared to other cities in our county and the financial impact that that has had on our families and our small businesses. I'd like to suggest that we talk about a more robust, more robust protections for renters and to include small businesses and families. Because even though our county and our state have provided a moratorium on evictions, we still had almost 100 families in the, since COVID began. Almost 100 families have been evicted and that is, you know, 100 more families on the street, 100 more folks or more than 100 people, right? Because our families struggling to find somewhere to live in the middle of a pandemic. So I'd really like for us to discuss it and include small businesses and, you know, and other tenants.
Okay, so again, that's, that's an item that requires financing money. We will see if anybody wants to agendize that. My personal suggestion again would be to discuss that at our strategic planning because that's when we're going to look at, you'll see in our reports later, I asked for a report to come back to us about our finances and that's later on tonight's agenda where we are going to all have to make some choices. There's only so much money, we have to decide where it's going to go.
Mayor, how would that, how would that cost us money? I'm not asking for, for service, right? Or for rental assistance, but it's a policy.
A policy that doesn't involve money?
Yeah, yeah, so it's language to protect people from eviction that's better language than the county and the state have.
I don't know if anybody, Andy or Jimmy would like to say something here other, because I'm not sure I understand what that would mean and if that should be, I don't know how to propose, I don't know how people will vote on something they don't understand unless everybody understands it better than I do.
Right, but if we put it on the agenda, then we can discuss it, right?
Madam Mayor, if I could help.
Yes.
And Ms. Armandaris, please cut me off because I don't ever claim to speak for anybody. There are cities that have done policies and, you know, actions that go farther than what the state or county does. And if you recall, when this first started about a year ago, the city started down that process but then felt that what the county and state were doing was what they wanted to line up with. So the city could always propose to do more. So if it's suitable to Councilmember Armandaris, we can come back with a staff report that shows some of the options to consider and then you can discuss as a policy group if you want to do more than what's currently being done.
Is that a simple?
Ms. Armandaris?
Absolutely agreeable to that, yes.
Okay, so Jimmy, is that a simple enough, just a second, Councilmember Tovar, is that a simple enough request to not need to be a future agenda item that you can just do and bring back? Or do we need to vote on it being a future agenda item?
Well, if they're, if they're going to bring back a report, wouldn't it be on the agenda?
Okay, yeah. Right, there's, there's, there's two ways you can do that if you'd like. You can just give me direction to come back. I, I could take direction for you or you could put it in a future council agenda item. Either way, I don't, this is not a overwhelming staff commitment and I can just take your direction either way.
I think it actually has to be done at this point under the Brown Act as a future council agenda item rather than, because we're not really supposed to discuss the concept now. We're supposed to discuss whether it should be put on the agenda for future discussion.
Understood, that's such a fine line to know, how do you, you know, right.
It is.
Okay, Councilmember Tovar, you want to say something?
No, first of all, thank you, Councilmember Armandaris. Jimmy, just so, for asking that, Jimmy, just so I understand, you did mention a little bit, wow, almost a year ago, I actually proposed something like that. Yeah, we had that discussion, but then we decided to use sort of the language that the county was, had in still. I mean, so I'm not sure how much different this discussion is going to be in regards to, are we going to look to sort of go above and beyond what the county's currently doing? I'm just trying to get a better sense of where we're at today and where we're at, you know, a year ago.
Well, this is, if I may, this is not something that I think a staff will have a recommendation on. It would rather be a question of information gathering as to what the current state of the protections are, because they have changed. You know, the, the state has extended eviction protection and so on. It's a, it's a somewhat fluid situation.
Yes.
And the staff can present that and the council could then decide whether it seems to be appropriate to give direction to staff to put together something that goes beyond in some, in some way.
Okay.
All right, I look forward to it, okay.
Okay, yes, and Jimmy's saying that isn't overwhelming to do, so a show of a thumbs up. Anybody who's okay with this? I see one, two, three, four, it looks unanimous to me. Okay, we will hear, hear a report and have it on the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay. Was there anyone else?
I have one, Mayor Blankley.
Councilmember Hilton?
With the council's consent, I'd like to ask staff to return with an updated report for requirements and details regarding SB 330. It's been about a year since his council's heard anything from that. That's the Housing Crisis Account Act of 2019 and Senate Bill 35, the streamlined approval process, just including the need for our residential development design and, and development standards, which we still don't have established. If our ADU ordinance has been approved by HCD and any kind of public outreach that's been done.
Okay, that one I know will take a lot of, well, I think, Jimmy, I should let you speak, I guess. To me, that one does take a lot of staff time. I know that staff has been working on those things, I don't know where they are today. Would you like to comment before, because that will be coming before us, will it not?
You know, it, it should, if there's a requirement to do an annual report, then it should. I'm going to be honest with you, not familiar exactly with that particular Senate bill. So I don't know exactly I'd be committing to. I would like to, you know, look a little more because I just couldn't say.
Okay, so Councilmember SB 330, as everyone knows, is the state mandate that, you know, we can't have growth control ordinance anymore. It's the one that says we've got a housing shortage that has to stop and everybody needs to help fix that. That's SB 330. You listed, Councilmember, several other things. I mean, the ADUs came in, changed there, but I'm not sure. It sounds to me like you're just asking for an update on where we are?
Yeah, I can read it again if you want.
No, it was, there was a lot of different things in there, but, but is what you're asking for an update?
Correct, so it's been, it's been a year since we've talked about this at the city council.
I know, but it's been a year of COVID when we're down a lot of people.
That, that's fine, but we still don't have any objective standards list for our multifamily residentials, you know, if you will. And, you know, that's something that, you know, that we won't be seeing in projects. So that's something that needs to be established and it's, it's been a year, I don't, I haven't heard anything about it. Other cities have established this, so that, that's all I wanted to know is just to get a, get a return. If it's in process, it's going to happen. And then, you know, our current ADU ordinance, has that been approved by HCD? And what kind of public outreach have we been telling the public about either of these measures? We haven't done anything since last, last February, that's what I'm asking for.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If, if it's agreeable to Mr. Hilton, this is easier for me to kind of do as a checklist and let me know, Mr. Hilton, if I'm missing you. We could give you an update on SB 330, SB 35, and then the ADU ordinance, has it been approved by HCD?
Okay, and then what we are doing as a, as a body, we're supposed to be doing the objective standards design list. That should have been done last January. So where are we in relation to getting that established and in front of the council? So that we can, so that when multifamily residential developers come in, they can look at that and know exactly where we, you know, our design, our objective design standards are. That's what I'm trying to get at and hopefully everybody understands that because if they don't, that's another reason why we need an update.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that and we'll have to, I guess I'll ask for a thumbs up now. I see what you're asking for there though is something not nearly as time-sensitive as what Councilmember Armandaris was, was asking for. So in, in my opinion, that, that, that kind of detail can wait if. that kind of detail can wait if, if, uh, our city administrator is able to answer your questions and where we are and the other things. But I'm just one. So for those who would like to future agendize what Mr. Hilton, um, asked for, um, you can go, go ahead and, uh, or is there just, yeah, I don't know what kind of discussion we, we need. I'm not sure what to ask, but.
These are ongoing planning activities that I think could be reported on fairly easily, I believe.
Yeah. Isn't that, isn't that what councilmember Hilton's asking for? A report?
That's what.
That's all I'm asking for.
Yeah.
Asking for anything.
Yeah, we don't have to agendize it. We can just have a report back offline.
No, I don't. I, I, that's not what I'm asking for. I'm not asking for offline. The, the community and the public, I want them to be able to hear an update. It's been more than a year, um, since anybody's heard anything. And I know that not all of us are on board with the exact same regulations. I know staff is not and the public's not. I want us to all come together to really understand and have a grasp of it. And that's, and I believe that a good solid report of just like what the city attorney said would be spot on and do it.
And I, I agree with you. It's just not the right time to me. We have too many other things that we are needing to spend our time with right now. That's just my opinion. With, and they are all COVID related. So, okay. So let's just, it's thumbs up if you would like this to, to be, Mr. Hilton would like it to be a future agenda item or, um, thumbs down if you, what, well, if you.
Well, here, I, I, I'll offer something else. The housing element is going to be coming up and it's due April 1st anyways to HCD. And I would imagine that we're going to be getting a report on the housing element.
Right.
Right? Which is going to, it's going to come before us before April. Could we tie this into that to actually have a discussion of where we're at in that same timeframe? Would that be suffice? Does that make, does that, does everybody understand what I'm asking for in that?
Jimmy?
Yes.
Yes. And I, 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 I do, I think we can do that. I think that's doable. Uh, we do have the, uh, housing element coming back. Uh, we can answer the update part and I don't think that's, um, elaborate. The next action may be more elaborate, but for now we'll respond back to Mr. Hilton's request for SB 35, SB 330, ADU approved by HUD and we'll do that. Oh, I'm sorry. Objective standards design list and we'll include that, uh, before the report of the housing element.
Thank you.
So, so no, uh, thumbs up necessary, right? Okay. Is there anyone else? All right then. Consent calendar. Does any council member wish to remove any item from the consent calendar before we vote on the items in the consent calendar? Okay, hearing then, um, Shawna or Suzanne, any public comments?
If you'd like to make a public comment on one of the items on our consent calendar, please raise your hand or dial star nine now. Madam Mayor, we have no public comments on this item.
Thank you. Okay. So I need a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar.
Approval.
Okay. I think I heard council member Braco and council members Tovar. Is that right? Okay. Um, roll call vote. Rebecca Armandares?
Yes.
Dion Braco?
Yes.
Zach Hilton?
Yes.
Peter LaRoeños?
Yes.
Carol Marks?
Yes.
Fred Tovar?
Yes.
Marie Blankley?
Yes.
All right. Item seven, bids and proposals. Award of a contract to ASG builders in the amount of $119,000 for the 2021 annual sidewalk gap closure and curb ramp improvement project. Number 21 PW 267 and approval of a total project expenditure of $131,000. I believe it is Gary who will be giving the staff report. Gary Heap.
Very good. Uh, could you see the presentation? Okay.
Yes.
I worked through the details from last week and got it to show up finally. So thank you very much for that. Uh, Mayor Blankley, members of the city council, good evening. I have the presentation this evening for award of the contract to ASG builders for our 2021 annual CDBG, uh, gap closure and curb ramp improvement project. Uh, this is a map of the location of the area within the nurse's zone. Uh, you'll see the primary area that we're focusing on this year. The 16 ramps are along Church Street, uh, and also then along Forest. These are streets that we're going to be paving, uh, in the next cycle of our paving program. And so we want to make sure and, uh, utilize the funding if possible, uh, to put down concrete work. So that when we do pave these streets in the future, we don't have to spend, uh, paving money to actually put down concrete. Uh, so we're going to be focusing on these two streets and with this project, uh, constructing 16 curb ramps. The city receives, receives community development block grant or CDBG annually from the Department of Housing and Urban Development to use within the neighborhood revitalization strategy area or the nurse neighborhood. The city council approved the CDBG 2021 annual action plan on July 1st of 2020 and with a project budget of $169,000. On December 1st, the city advertised the project in the Mercury News and on the city's website and received six bids on January 6th. ASG builders was the lowest responsible bidder. The total bid that's being asked for this evening for award is for 119,000, which is the amount of the contract and that low bid. We're also requesting a contingency of $12,000 to be available in case we run into any unforeseen circumstances during construction, uh, for a maximum expenditure of $131,000. And the funding source again will be fund 250 for the community development block grant funding. With that, the recommendation is to order a contract to ASG builders in the amount of 119,000 for construction of the 2021 annual sidewalk gap closure and curb rapid improvement project and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and associated documents. As a second action, we're asking council to approve a contingency amount of $12,000 to be expended only with the approved change orders from staff, uh, for a maximum project expenditure of $131,000. And that concludes the presentation and I'm available for any questions or if you have comments.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to go to council for questions of staff in alphabetical order. So council member Armandares, do you have any questions?
Not at this moment.
Thank you. Councilmember Braco?
No questions.
Councilmember Hilton?
No questions.
Councilmember LaRoeños?
No questions.
Councilmember Marks?
No questions.
Councilmember Tovar?
No questions here.
All right. And I don't have any questions. So, um, Shawna or Suzanne, are there any public comments?
If you would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand or dial star nine. Madam Mayor, there are no public comments on this item.
All right. Back to council. Any?
Move approval.
Okay. Is there a, a second?
Second.
We have a motion made by councilmember LaRoeños, seconded by councilmember Marks to award a contract to ASG builders in the amount of 119,000 for the construction of the 2021 annual sidewalk gap closure and curb ramp improvements project and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and associated documents. Roll call, please. Rebecca Armandares?
Yes.
Dion Braco?
Yes.
Zach Hilton?
Yes.
Peter LaRoeños?
Yes.
Carol Marks?
Yes.
Fred Tovar?
Yes.
Marie Blankley?
Yes. And now we need a second, uh, motion for the contingency of $12,000.
I would move approval as well.
All right. I heard councilmember LaRoeños. I didn't, who was the second?
Paul Second.
Okay. Councilmember Marks is the second on that one. And this is to approve a contingency amount of $12,000 to be expended only with an approved change order for a maximum project expenditure of $131,000. Roll call, please. Rebecca Armandares?
Yes.
Dion Braco? Dion, you're on mute.
Yes.
Zach Hilton?
Yes.
Peter LaRoeños?
Yes.
Carol Marks?
Yes.
Fred Tovar?
Yes.
Marie Blankley?
Yes.
And that, sorry, they both passed unanimously. I know I was supposed to say that. All right. Item B is award of a contract to Rosenbauer America in the amount not to exceed 699,501.91 for a type one fire engine and adoption of a resolution of the city council of the city of Gilroy to enter into a lease purchase agreement with leasing to Incorporated to finance the type one fire engine purchase for five years at the interest rate of 1.9% for a financing cost not to exceed $40,451.09. And this staff report is coming from Leanne and Fire Chief Wyatt.
Thank you, honorable mayor and council. Uh, I'm going to start off as the, as the fire chief and then I'll let, uh, Leanne McPhillips, uh, fill you in on the second part of it, the actual financing. So let me, uh, uh, first, uh, share my screen. Give me a second. And I'm assuming everyone can see the screen. Okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. So, um, this is, uh, for the, uh, fire engine purchase and lease options. And, uh, let me first, uh, go through. So currently, uh, we have a frontline type one fire engine at our LA station. It's 19 years old. It's actually, uh, since we started the first of this year, it's now going on to its, uh, 20th year. And, uh, with that, it exceeds the, uh, National Fire Protection Association standard for frontline service of 15 years, meaning that, uh, it's already exceeded its, uh, frontline status as a first in rig. And so, uh, it needs to be placed in reserve status, but we're actually four years over that reserve status, uh, as a frontline rig. Uh, through collaboration, uh, of both of all the, uh, the fire department, uh, public works and fleet, uh, we designed, uh, uh, and developed specs for the new type one engine. Formal bids were received in November of 2020 last year. And, uh, we received one bid from Rosenbauer America in the amount of 6,000, 699,502 for a total cost for a new type one engine. We also had a tag on bid with Santos AFD that was nearly a hundred thousand dollars more in costs. So, uh, based on, uh, staff's, uh, review of the Rosenbauer, um, bid as well as what Santos A, uh, uh, tag on bid, we felt that the Rosenbauer was a, uh, better, uh, uh, option for us, uh, particularly of its lower cost and the fact that it came in at the, uh, at, as, uh, the lowest bid out of, out of the two. And with this, I'm going to go ahead and turn over the financing portion to, uh, Leanne McPhillips.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Um, we want to talk to you about the lease purchase option for this type one fire engine because it's something new that we haven't done before. Uh, but before getting into those details, uh, just given the sheer cost involved, $700,000 to purchase a, a new fire engine, we don't take this process lightly. We have, uh, very carefully vetted the need for this fire engine before moving this staff report forward. Given the age of the engine that Chief Wyatt just mentioned, and the fact that we've already pushed it four years past its, uh, recommended frontline service, the other things that we considered before moving this forward were the number of times that this engine is going out of service. And it, looking at the last year, uh, February 1st of 2020 through January 31st of 2021, uh, this particular engine went out of service 18 times for a total of 41 days at a cost of over $17,000. Um, so when we start looking at factors like that, we, we know we've reached the, uh, lifespan for this being a frontline engine, uh, needing to move it into reserve status and, and do, we do need to replace it with, with a new engine. It's, it's for the safety of the community, safety of the firefighters. Uh, we need a reliable, dependable engine that we can count on. So given the cost involved and, and given our current financial situation, we, we wanted to explore some different options for how we might pay for this expensive fire engine. And in talking to other agencies, a best practice that is used by agencies is a lease purchase arrangement. Um, it, it allows us to control our cash flow with no large upfront payment required. Uh, right now, interest rates are low. Um, so that makes, uh, financing, uh, much more attractive. We can, uh, finance up to a hundred percent of the cost without, uh, need for a down payment. Um, we are financing at today's cost purchase versus saving up and, and then purchasing in an out year, uh, at where the engine prices is just going to go up year to year. Uh, we can plan for the payments and include it in our budget process. And we can spread the cost across the taxpayers who are going to be, um, gaining the benefit of the use of the engine, uh, rather than having, uh, dollars that we've saved up, um, that, you know, basically have been borne by, by past taxpayers, uh, by planning for it, planning for a financing like this, it spreads, uh, the cost of the engine across to, uh, current taxpayers who are going to be reaping the benefits of the engine going into service. And by having new equipment, we'll have less, uh, servicing time from our fleet shop, increased reliability. So those are some of the reasons why the least purch- purchase option is, is an attractive option for us at this time. Next slide. So in looking at this option, we talked to four different financing vendors and we received three formal proposals. And the staff report, uh, that's in the agenda packet, uh, goes into that in, in a lot of detail. But the interest rates range from 1.9% to 2.69%. Uh, leasing to Incorporated offered the lowest interest rates, uh, of all the vendors that submitted proposals. They specialize in fire EMS financing and they have 20 years of experience servicing municipalities. Um, given that we do have some other, uh, needs, um, to purchase and replace, uh, frontline fire equipment, uh, in addition to this type one engine, um, we felt that we should move this purchase forward with a five-year term at the 1.9% uh, because we do envision with our budget process that we're moving into for fiscal year 22 and 23, needing, needing to plan for the next two replacements that, um, that we have with our fire apparatus fleet. Um, and that will allow us to budget for these payments and, and plan the future purchases based on our replacement needs. Um, and we might look at a longer term, um, lease purchase option for future pieces of equipment that, that we need to, uh, look at in the next couple of fiscal years. Next slide. So our, um, our next steps are to, um, enter into a purchasing contract with Rosenbauer America, finalize lease purchase documents with leasing to, uh, budget for the annual payments, and then closely monitor the one-year build process, uh, because we will not see this actual engine going into service for a little over a year. Once we, we complete the approval process. Then I think I'm handing it back to Chief Wyatt.
Thank you, Leanne. So, uh, fire engine purchase and financing, staff recommends the following. Award a contract to Rosenbauer America for a type one fire engine, uh, number 21 dash PW 262 for a price not to exceed 699,000, five, 699,000, 501, 91, base price of 642, 073, uh, plus 9% sales tax. Adopt a resolution. Excuse me just a second. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city administrator to enter into a five-year lease purchase agreement with leasing to Incorporated to finance the purchase of the type one fire engine in the amount of 699,000, um, five, $501.91 purchased from Rosenbauer America for financing costs not to exceed 1.9% or $40,451.09. And with that, I'll, uh, take any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you. So I will first go to council members, um, alphabetically. Councilmember Armandares, do you have any questions of, uh, staff? No. All right. Councilmember Braco?
Uh, my question's for Jimmy, I think, um, since we've never done this before, are we in that bad of financial shape that we can't pay for the fire engine that we need to finance it?
Yes, Mr. Braco, um, absolutely not. Um, we could pay for this completely with all of our cash, uh, but knowing that we're going to replace two more in the near future and knowing that the interest rates are so low, um, it, it's an opportunity for us to it, it's an opportunity for us to stretch that. I think it's the equivalent of we could afford to buy a new car, but we're getting a great deal on the financing terms and so we, we want to utilize those. But no, the answer to your question is, if we had to, we could pay cash upfront for this vehicle. We just would have to wait longer to rebuild that cash back to replace the others.
Well, my concern is, in business, we finance stuff because it's a tax write-off. But the city can't write it off. So we're just basically tossing out the forty thousand dollars and financing it. Right?
Well, I, I'd know, I, I'd say the reason why that's, I don't feel like we're tossing out the window is that if we had to save up the additional seven hundred thousand for the next engine, the price would go up by forty thousand. So this is going to accelerate our ability to purchase new engines and believe that there's some point where we're saving enough money on the financing that we're not waiting for the engine to get more and more expensive. Because that's what we're going to have to wait for, for the next purchase. If we pay cash with this one entirely, we'll have to accumulate seven hundred thousand dollars or even more as that engine continues to cost more in the future. So okay, that's what we balanced.
Okay, I have a question for the chief. Is this like the last one we got? Is it the same thing?
No, it's a different engine, a smaller wheelbase and a little bit more agile. It is similar to the, the two high-tech engines that we currently are in possession of. And it would, it would certainly handle the, the LA area quite nicely.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay, sorry. Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you, Mary Blankley. I didn't want to step on you there.
No, it's okay. I was just like waiting for more.
So I'll, I'll be supporting this. I know, I understand from the report and speaking with Gilroy Fire, Local twenty-eight oh five and the chief that we need this engine now and we cannot wait. However, I'm hopeful that in the future, we can include the Fire Chief and members of Local twenty-eight oh five in the RFP process. I'm not, I wasn't able to witness how the RFP process goes down, but I've, I've seen different bits and pieces of it. And placing an RFP notice in the San Jose Mercury and just on our website, in my opinion, is just not good enough. We have dedicated members of the department that are willing to make contacts with manufacturers and just simply letting them know that the RFP process is open while staying impartial and out of the RFP process. And in closing, not all fire engine companies are created equally. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember LaRoma Yos.
I have no questions, but I appreciate staff being very thoughtful and sophisticated in approaching this from a financial perspective.
Thank you, as do I. All right, Councilmember Marks.
No questions.
Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I do have a question on what Councilmember Hilton just asked. Maybe it's for Jimmy. Jimmy, Councilmember Hilton asked about allowing others to participate in the RFP process. Is that common practice or is that allowable? I'm just trying to understand. It sounds like he's had some conversations with some folks and I'm just wondering if that's something that's allowed during this process.
Well, I, I don't know specifically what has been discussed with twenty-eight oh five. And I, I'll let Chief Wyatt verify, but I can't imagine, and I actually know, we did not go through a process and not talk to firefighters about purchasing an engine. So I, other than the specifics, but I could, I could defer to Chief Wyatt, as he could probably tell you the input that they've had. This engine has been talked about for five years. And so I know at one point Chief Anderson was involved and Chief Wyatt finished up. And so Chief Wyatt, do you want to talk about any input that twenty-eight oh five had?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say that with every step of the way, as we were developing the specifications, it was clear that we wanted an engine that mimicked our capabilities now that were, that are currently existing. In other words, we're, we handle all risks with our fire engines. We don't have a staffed truck. So the truck would, in other departments, when they do staff one, typically carry the extrication equipment. Our engines actually carry everything. Not only just the hose and the ladders and the water, but also extrication and, and other various equipment needed on fires and on vehicle accidents. So in so doing, we need a, a specialized rig that can handle all the equipment and the compartment spaces is really at a premium. What's happened before is that when we, when we plan such things, there's a tendency to carry as much water as possible and carry as much as we, as much equipment as possible. We found with our last engine that probably the better way to go, at least in the more residential areas, is to get a, a smaller engine, smaller wheelbase and not carry as much water, but increase our, our compartment space. With all that said, this, this required input from twenty-eight oh five members and they were the ones that, that offered the, the inclusion of greater compartment space, less water carried and a more agile engine.
Okay, so thank you for that detailed response. So from what I understand, you're saying, yes, there was input and feedback received. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, and I don't have questions of staff at this time. So Shauna or Suzanne, do we have any
a question? And I might have missed it. I apologize, Chief, if, if I did. But do we know how long this engine is, is estimated to, to last us?
Yeah, so we follow the National Fire Protection Association standards for fire apparatus and that includes a fifteen-year frontline status. In other words, they, they respond as the first out on all fires and other types of calls. And then there's another ten years that we place it in reserve status. So a total of twenty-five years. This engine should meet that same standard and we would try to follow it as closely as possible, given current budget situations or future budget situations. That was one of the reasons that we extended the life of the current engine forty-eight that's at LA four years beyond its front, frontline status. And it was mainly because of budget considerations. So is it possible to extend it further? Yes, it is. But as you can see, based on the, the information that was provided, that it's been out of service for up to forty-two days last, just last year alone. That's probably, we've probably exceeded what we should have done.
Got it. Thank you. I'd like to go to the public now. Do we have any public comments?
If you'd like to make a public comment, please raise your hand. Our dial star nine now. Madam Mayor, there are no public comments on this item.
Okay, so back to council. Is there anything further from any council member?
I'd move approval.
I have something first that, Mayor, Mary Blankley.
You have a comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, before the motion. So just for, you know, through you to, to Councilmember Tovar, what I was speaking about is not the specs of the engine, but the actual manufacturers. So there's a lot of manufacturers around that would be willing to put in an RFP in. And so that's basically what I was talking about is getting them involved. This, you know, as, as firefighters, this is something that they live and breathe. This is what they work on. This is what they live on. They take very good care of it. And that's all I was trying to say is, is that the input that they could be able to provide and may getting different manufacturers, not the specs themselves, but getting manufacturers to step up to put an RFP in. Thank you.
Thank you. That makes sense. Thank you.
We can definitely make sure that, you know, when we're going through the purchasing process and the bid process, that twenty-eight oh five is notified of that. So if they have particular manufacturers that they want to make sure is aware that we're accepting those proposals, that they can get that word out and help us with that.
Okay, Councilmember LaRoma.
That, that's just the biggest thing I was talking about. Thank you, Leanne.
Okay, Councilmember LaRoma Yos was about to make a motion.
I did. Move approval.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second. We have a second by Councilmember Hilton to award a contract not to exceed six hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and one dollars, ninety-one cents to Rosenbauer America for a type one fire engine project number twenty-one dash PW two sixty-two. Roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Armandaris.
Yes.
Bian Bracco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Peter LaRoma Yos.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar.
Yes.
Marie Blankley.
Yes. And that motion passes unanimously. And now looking for a second motion to adopt the financing agreement.
So the move.
All right, that was Councilmember, I'm going to say Tovar motion, Councilmember LaRoma Yos second to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Gilroy, authorizing the city administrator to enter into a five-year lease purchase agreement with leasing to incorporated to finance the purchase of the type one fire engine in the amount of six hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and one dollars, ninety-one cents purchased from Rosenbauer America for a financing cost not to exceed a rate of one point nine percent or forty thousand dollars, four hundred and fifty-one and nine cents. Roll call vote.
This is resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash oh four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Gilroy, authorizing the city administrator to finalize and execute the lease purchase agreement with leasing to Inc. For a type one fir, fire engine in an amount not to exceed six hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and one dollars and ninety-one cents purchased from Rosenbauer America. Rebecca Armandaris.
Yes.
Bian Bracco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Peter LaRoma Yos.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar.
Yes.
Marie Blankley.
Yes, that motion passes unanimously. All right, moving item nine A, standing report on operational impacts and city community efforts related to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Chief Wyatt.
Sorry, Mayor, I was trying to get, get my screen filled, cleared. So I, I wanted to give a, a quick update on COVID in, in the city and comparison of the county. Right now, just based on the, the county's own stats for today, countywide, there's been a hundred and two thousand infections, actually a hundred and two, four hundred and twenty-seven. And then a total of one thousand, four hundred and eighteen deaths and four hundred and seventy-four hospitalizations. These are impressive stats. And even though citywide, our, our numbers are much smaller as compared to the county, we constitute seven percent of the county's infections, total number of infections, and yet we're only three point five percent of the county's population. So virtually we're double. And if you look at any of the other cities, our infection rate is, excuse me, just a second, I'm going to bring it up. Our infection rate is, is twelve thousand sixty-three. That's almost double of anybody else. Along with that, I don't have the most current number of folks that have passed from COVID for our city. But the last time I checked, we were, we were one point five times the death rate than, than the rest of the county. So what does this all equate to? We still remain, and I know the county doesn't like us saying this, but we still remain a hotspot. It makes the, it makes it imperative that we, that we seek routine testing of, of our, of our residents. And in addition to that, that now that the vaccine is somewhat available, that we make a concerted effort to, to vaccinate our, our most vulnerable. The good thing to, to note is that that is being accomplished right now. I have personal knowledge of, of one of our retirement communities just recently getting the, the vaccine. And I know that Valley Health Center is routinely vaccinating the elderly of our communit, uh, community. I'll just say that whatever else we can do to help speed that along, we are looking into it and we'd like to partner with the county. I, I will always go back to this, though, that it's the responsibility of every resident to do their best to mask up whenever possible, to maintain social distancing with, with it whenever possible. And obviously, proper hygiene. This will help at least stem some of the, the effects of COVID, but it won't stop at all. And our community's been hit very hard. It doesn't take but a small trip through some of our streets to see the lines forming at, at St. Mary's and at the Salvation Army sites. So it is definitely impacting us. And I can tell you this, that this city's been committed to making sure that we do whatever we can to help get the vaccine into the arms of every person that, that needs it the most. And I'm ready to take any questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. Questions of staff from the council? Councilmember Armandaris.
Thank you, Chief, for that, that report. I know the information that the mayor and I get to listen in on from, from our county leaders every week is, is always startling. You know, the last number we got of the number of deaths in Gilroy was sixty-seven, you know.
Oh, my goodness. Okay.
Yeah, one and a half times the amount, almost two times the amount of, of any other city per capita. And so it's very shocking and heartbreaking the amount of suffering that's happening. And so I appreciate the effort of yourself and our other city and county leaders. From what I understand, there'll be a concentrated effort and that the, the fire department will be partnering, I believe, to help provide vaccines to our vulnerable seniors.
Yes, ma'am.
And I, I think that's a great idea. It's a great effort because their caretakers, I believe, will be also eligible for the, for the vaccine, right? So we want them to be twice as safe. And then I'd, oh, I lost my train of thought, but, but I would, I do want to, to say that despite all the barriers and, and issues with the rollout of this, I think our county is doing one of the better jobs that you would see in the state and across the country in terms of getting the vaccine to people. And then lastly, I put in a call to Kaiser myself because I know that they were not going to be setting appointments for, for Kaiser members who live in Gilroy at the Gilroy facility. And folks like my mom, who's seventy-eight, will have to travel to Santa Clara or their other facilities. Some folks went as far as San Francisco to get their appointment. So I'd really love for them to, you know, get, get with it and not forget those of us in, in South County who need it, you know, especially seniors who, who don't want to travel to San Jose, much less San Francisco. So again, thank you. Thank you for the information.
Councilmember Bracco? Nope.
No.
Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you, Mary Blankley. Chief, thank you for your advocacy on getting Santa Clara County and get the vaccine programs down here. And thank you to you and your department for stepping up to be able to provide that vaccine. And thank you for making that statement to the citizens to simply wear their mask and hygiene. I think that's really important to hear that from you as the Fire Chief. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember LaRoma Yos.
No comments, Mayor.
Councilmember Marks.
No questions.
Councilmember Tovar.
No questions.
Okay, all I'm going to add is that we are, thank you, Chief, for all that information. And Gilroy is being considered by the county for a mass vaccination site. And that is something we are working directly with them on. So while it is true that in the meantime, our fire department is working with getting those vaccines going, the issue is still getting enough vaccines from the state. But we are going to be ready to have a mass vaccination site in Gilroy as soon as the county has access to the vaccines to mass distribute. So please note that that is happening. It's an effort between City of Gilroy owned properties and GUSD owned properties. All right, do we have any comments from the public on this item?
If you would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand now or dial star nine. We have one public comment. Makhan Gupta. I'm going to allow you to talk now.
My name is Makhan Gupta, senior resident of Gilroy over twenty years. And I do appreciate and thank you for all the efforts, things the, you guys doing. Only comment I have is on the vaccination. Been there quite a few times, have spoken to a lot of people who go there, take appointment. And one biggest complaint, everybody's saying, in spite of the appointment they have, they have to wait for hours, hours and hours. they have to wait for hours, hours and hours to get the vaccination. And people can't understand why they have to wait at the appointment. And for example, in my case, I have to go to Santa Clara County Fairground, and what I saw over there was absolutely amazing program. I mean, you park the car, you go in, and you sign a few things there, go there, get the shot and wait, second appointment done right away. I saw amazing, amazing way, the fastest thing they were doing. And if they can be benchmark on the program, I think it would be nice if we can, we can understand that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others? Madam Mayor, there are no other public comments at this time. Okay, this is just a receive report item, so thank you, Chief. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Item B, continued annual appointments to city boards, commissions, and committees with seats vacant or expired as of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty. Shawna, I'll start with letting you give the staff report and then we'll go on from there. Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, you have the extended recruitment that we ran in January, following your appointment process on January fourth. We have four boards, commissions, committees with vacancies that are still needing to be filled. And we have some applicants that are actually with us tonight who are interested in interviewing with you, and then we ask that you please fill these vacancies, and I'm very happy to say we have enough applicants to fill every seat and then some. And I'm available for any questions you may have. Okay, thanks. I, I'd like to ask a question, or if you could please just add to your report, Shawna, could you tell everybody why, we had two seats open on the Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, and we had eight applicants before. We filled those two seats, and now we have another two seats open, and one is because of a, of a, Shawna, please explain to everybody why that is, yeah? I'd be happy to. So our neighborhood, our Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization Committee is a combination of two other committees that were converged, as most of the council members probably recall. We went through an attrition process to build that commission down to a smaller number from the original twelve. And one of our committee members was recently appointed to our planning commission, but his application when he became a, a member of the Citizens Neighborhood Revivalization, Revitalization Committee at the time, used a different last name, and so we had no idea that was the same person, so we found that out. And then we also had a planning commission representative who served on these converged committees. And now that we have our new committee, it no longer has a representative from any other border committee. So we need to fill that vacancy as well. So this will make us whole, and that conversion is actually completely taken place now as of this, this year. Right, and on that particular committee, three of the four applicants tonight were applicants before. Were applicants, were in the eight applicants before. Okay, so my understanding is that anybody who wished, who, who has applied and wished to be present at tonight's meeting was asked to do so. So to the extent that anybody is present, is anybody present, Shawna, do you know? Yes, we have quite a few people present. Melanie Reynason is our first person, and she is the only applicant for the single seat on the Arts and Culture Commission. And Melanie, you can go ahead and, and answer any questions the council may have of you.
Okay, thank you for having me tonight. Um, yeah, I'm open to any questions that you have. I've served on the Public Art Committee before it converged with the Arts and Culture Commission. So I joined, we conjoined last, I think it was last year.
Thank you, Melanie. You are, you're the only applicant for one seat, so I, I don't know, does any council member have a burning question? Otherwise, we can just ask Melanie to maybe tell us a little bit about herself if she would like and, and go on to the next. Anybody with something burning? Okay, Melanie, would you just, would you like to just, I don't know, you don't have to say anything, but do you want to?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and address. So I think being part of the Public Art Committee, we were very focused on fundraising efforts, and we only had a few fundraising efforts, and then it started to change into city development with the developers being required to have some public art in there, and then when it, we merged with the Arts and Culture Committee or Commission, it kind of grew to being everything art-related, which was really nice, except we just didn't know really the, the direction to go. So I think to be on the Commission again for another term would be great. I didn't really feel like I had a chance to get to know, especially with the COVID year, it was really different. But to get to be a part of some of the culture side of it and really see what we can do to engage with the community, and I kind of want to be able to do a little bit more of that with social media, which I don't really do a lot of, but I really want to do more, and I want to find some of our Commission members to engage more and find ways we can do that. So also looking at some of the plans for Gourmet Alley, it looks like it involves a lot of art-related things down there, some of the plans, so it just seems like an exciting four years coming up that I want to be involved with.
Well, thank you for stepping up because we needed someone to apply for this seat. Thank you very much. All right, then, how about we move on to Building Board of Appeals? Last time we had no applicants, and now we have three. Yes, Madam Mayor, we have Chris, I have a Chris on, I believe it might be Christopher Deimers. Christopher, would you raise your hand, please, to confirm you are indeed Christopher Deimers? Chris? He's not raising, oh, there we go, great. So Chris is coming on. Madam Mayor, would you like all applicants at the same time, or would you prefer one of those at a time? Why don't we get them all on, if that's possible to do? If that's too difficult, it's okay. Yep, we also have Ishmael Saleem, and Joseph Worthham. Can you raise your hand if you're with us? I do not see Joseph, so we just have the two applicants, Christopher Deimers and Ishmael Saleem with us. Okay, then why don't we start with Christopher? Well, does any council member have a particular question in mind? Because otherwise, I would do a general question about, you know, why, what, why they're applying and what makes them think that they're the best candidate for this, for this role? Is that all right with everybody?
In a minute or less.
Yeah, well, we, we don't have forty-three applicants this, it can be a little, yeah, it could be a little better. So, okay, then, Chris, would you like to go ahead and tell us a little bit about your desire to be on the Building Board of Appeals?
Sure, Mayor and Council. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I had applied to the Planning Commission and, and Shawna or Suzanne, I'm not sure which one, had mentioned that this was an opening after that didn't work out, and I'm very interested in the, the development of Gilroy and want to be involved in the city's planning in any capacity I can, and seeing the Board of Appeals opportunity seemed like, you know, a, a, a very worthwhile thing to be involved with as well. I have a background, I, I lead sustainability, corporate sustainability at Sun Power Corporation in, in San Jose. And, you know, a lot of that translates as well, and because I, you know, am concerned with all of our capital expenses and, and other things in terms of our sustainability practices, and a lot of that translates well to the city setting as well. And in terms of being on a Board of Appeals, I, in a prior life, was in federal government service and played a role in managing large federal government contracts as a contracting officer, technical representative, and I'm very familiar with large projects which have appeals processes to them and which, which gets scrutinized and must be justified at higher levels. Also, although I'm not a practicing lawyer, I am trained as a lawyer, and I do understand the, the planning, the local planning process, zoning, permitting, and, and, you know, what, what typically gets appealed and what needs to be looked at in terms of technical soundness and, and adherence to, to master plans and, and cost concerns, of course, as well. So I feel like I have a good suite of sort of understandings to help out in this role, and like I said, I'm, I'm very keen on being part of the, the, the development efforts of the Gilroy community.
All right, thank you very much. Ishmael, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, can you please go ahead and tell us what makes you, why you're interested in the Building Board of Appeals and how you'd be the best candidate?
All right, well, I'll try to follow Chris, but I'm in the same boat as him. We both went for the planning position or the planning committee. I am a, I don't have a diverse background as Chris. He's, he's done some pretty awesome things. My background is primarily within hospitality. I've, I've worked as an executive with the hospitality company for about eight years where I did some planning and, and some construction from an operational standpoint, but I've had my hands in the beginning stages all the way through to the grand opening party in all aspects. But for me personally, I'm just trying to get my, my, my feet wet within Gilroy and in the community and, and do the best that I can. I'm new to the area, brought my family here in April, we're settled in, having a great time, but yeah, just looking to do my part in the community best of all.
Thank you, yeah, I do see your name now from Planning Commission before. All right, then I remember now, thank, because I can't see your face this time, but I can picture it. Okay, and Shawna, you said there's no one else here for this commission, right? Correct, yes. Okay, so council, is it all right to move on to the next, uh, next commission applicants? All right, I'm moving on to Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization Committee. We have four applicants here, three of whom we interviewed before, one of whom is new. So to the extent that even the ones we interviewed before are here tonight, we welcome them to say a few words. Otherwise, we can just hear from Daniel Cole, is it? Whatever is the preference of the people here.
Makhan Gupta?
One moment, please, Makhan, one moment.
Somebody asked me to unmute, that's why, sorry.
No worries. Madam Mayor, Makhan is honestly the only person I see on our list who has applied. Let's see, Daniel, if you're with us, will you please raise your hand? I do not see Daniel, and I don't have Joanne or Janelle either. Okay, then why don't we go ahead and let Makhan speak?
I applied one time, didn't apply the second time, didn't know about that. And if there is a place open anywhere I would love to serve, I have done many, many multiple things in my career in this country for forty-plus years, and would love to serve the city, and how I serve, where I serve, doesn't matter. I have a, I'm a college degree with biology and chemistry and botany degree. Worked for a company like Alcoa, companies like US Pipe and Steel, worked with the water industry, many, many different experience. And if I can be of service to the city, I would love to do so. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for, for applying, and thank you for wanting to serve. All right, council, may I move on to Library Commission? All right, Library Commission, we have three applicants for one seat. Linda Chen, Victoria Covertson, and Patricia Reinhardt. Are they here? Yes, ma'am, all three of them are here. Okay, so we have not heard from any of these three before, right? Right. Correct. Okay, so why don't we, in whatever order, Shawna, you'd like to have them start? If you could please, thank you for being here, and let us know why you'd like to be on the Library Commission and why you think you'd be the, the most effective candidate.
Hello, thank you so much for having me. I'm Victoria, I'm, I'm honor mayor and council member. It's great to actually see you live instead of your pictures on signs, so it's, it's great to be here. First of all, I want to say that I feel compelled and really moved to serve in my city. And I've been here for twenty years, and my children are grown, and one graduated from college and the others in high school, and I feel like my skill set of being an educator and working in the library system and understanding community engagement and inclusion and diversity, especially during a time right now that I could really come alongside this commission to offer skills, ideas, and support in supporting the mission of the library goals and, and supporting the council and mayor's offers to move that forward.
Okay, thank you. All right, who would like, Shawna, who, who would go next? You're on mute, Shawna. Linda Chen is next.
Hi, it's nice to see everyone here. I'm Linda Chen, and it's, I feel kind of lucky to be able to Gilroy resident because I moved here from San Jose in twenty-seventeen, and I'm currently a high school teacher, teaching public school, I teach mentoring. And I always not shy to tell my students, hey, you all are my mentor, teaching me English, because thirty years ago, I was too shy to speak in English. Everything I've learned is all from teaching as a substitute teacher, as a volunteer parent and community volunteer, especially when I serve as a select parent, and when I helped local library in Berriasa, funded many, many programs. So through these years, I have learned a lot of skills, and I have, I'm very, very passionate working with the youth. So for my last community, Berriasa, I constantly working with the library, founded two holiday events annually for ten years before I moved here. So even after I moved here in twenty-seventeen, I kind of, first place I, I went to, and I want to visit is the library. I tried to work with our library manager to see if I can offer any programs. So, because my mission for serving on the board, I really want to bring our community together through the creation of programs and, and serving our youth and elderly and all the events that are accessible to everyone, and, and also can have a bigger voice and bring us or school and community and the city can work together, have a bigger voice. And I was the board member, school board member for eight years from twenty, I know, two thousand and six to twenty-fourteen. And I have to share with everyone, I have passion serving my community, even I know my first board meeting, I cannot speak any in English, but I did it for two years, after two years, I, I got it, and people know I'm there serving my community, and I just want to make sure, after I moved to Gilroy, I can continue my passion to serve my community, especially helping the youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda, your compassion shows, it's, it's coming through, all right?
I'm nervous, sorry.
No, no, it's, it's very nice. Okay, Pat Reinhardt?
Okay, good evening, council members. I would start out saying I never would have thought of applying for the Library Commission, except that Kelly Brennan Young, one of our head librarians, sent me the information that they were looking for people. And since I have been somewhat stymied by COVID in not being able to do some volunteer things.
Oh, you went on to mute. Pat, you're on mute.
I wasn't. Start over?
Well, we heard you until about a second ago.
Okay. Computers. Okay, put it back together. I kind of grew up in the library orbit because my mother was a full-time librarian for the San Francisco Public Libraries. I graduated from Stanford in sixty-four, when you actually had to use a library to write a term paper before the computer got into the act. Since then, I've been a teacher and principal in several different elementary schools, principally in East Los Angeles for many years. Was impressed there with the Los Angeles library, which actually had a book Was impressed there with the Los Angeles library, which actually had a book written about it. From there, I went to the Central Valley and got into adult education, English as a second language in a town that had a one-room library open for two days. Well, to come from that to Gilroy was absolutely a delight. I could not believe the services that were provided by the Gilroy Library. It's almost as if the books weren't so important anymore, but everything from talks to crafts, even meals. To me, this library feels more like a community center than just a library. And until COVID hit, I was there every day to use the computers, attended talks and forums, loved class cap, loved the craft classes and was getting involved in working on the Maker Fair until it, of course, got canceled. Basically, I feel as if I've been given much by the Gilroy Library and I want to give back in any way that I can.
Okay, thank you so much for applying. We very much appreciate it. All right, counsel, we have one applicant for the Physically Challenged Board of Appeals, Mary Drummond. It's only for one seat, but I see Mary is here. So Mary, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yes, thank you. I am a longtime community member. I've lived in Gilroy since nineteen eighty-two. Raised three kids here and they're all out on their own and I am a fairly recent widow. I have been a foster parent for medically fragile children and most of them also physically challenged for the last eighteen years, and I've had over thirty foster children in my home over those years. And so I have personal experience dealing with people infants all the way up through youth who have all different types of disabilities, vision, physical and mental disabilities, blindness, cerebral palsy, even some of the really bad things that happen to little ones, shaken baby syndromes with a lot of brain injuries. And so I have a personal understanding by working with these these little ones. And my husband and I adopted one of the children who is now fifteen. And she has just about every one of those disabilities. There was no takers for her when it came to being adopted by anyone else and she would have gone into a facility. And so it's a very personal thing for me when it comes to the ADA and disability rights. And I would like to be able to offer some of my skills. I've worked as a Vista, which is Volunteers in Service to America, which is formerly the Domestic Peace Corps, working for the reading program. I'm the current president, vice president of the Kinship Adoptive Foster Parent Association for Santa Clara County. As I said, I've been a foster parent for many, many years and I've received, you know, various awards over the years. But I would like to be able to offer fair hearings for any of the people or businesses that have a, you know, have a difficulty and want to object to what the city of Gilroy is asking them to do. And I would say one of the skills that I do often bring to the table is to bring ideas and also I'm known for helping both sides come to agreement. And and I've had a lot of experience with that over the years. So thank you. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you very much for being here. Counsel, does anyone have any questions before we revisit all of these commissions? Okay, thank you. Thank you all for applying. Thank you for being here tonight. We are going to, I I'm hoping counsel that we can fill these seats tonight. Is everybody feel ready to do that? Okay, so we will go back. So Arts and Culture Commission, that's an easy one. Do I have to formally go through it, Shawna? Even though there's only one applicant for one seat?
I think when the council actually takes action, you can include the Arts and Culture Commission, if that's the pleasure of the full council.
When we take, what do you mean?
When you get to the point where you actually make a motion to appoint to these seats, you can include the single Arts and Culture Commissioner applicant.
Okay, but we I need to go through council member by council member for the ones that have multiples, right?
I think that would be best so that you can actually get the number you need.
Okay, all right. So then we'll do Building Board of Appeals. So we have two seats and three applicants. So please, when I call your name, give me your two choices. Councilmember Armandaris.
I would go with Chris and Ismail.
Okay, councilmember Braco.
Chris and Ismael.
Councilmember Hilton.
Chris and Ismael.
Councilmember La Romanos.
I'll also go with Chris and Ismael.
Councilmember Marks.
Chris and Ismael.
Councilmember Tovar.
I as well, Chris and Ismael.
I as well, so it's unanimous on those two for Building Board of Appeals. All right, Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, two seats, four applicants. So again, when I call your name, your two choices. Councilmember Armandaris.
Janelle and Joanne.
Okay, councilmember Braco.
Makon and Joanne.
Councilmember Hilton.
Joanne and Janelle.
Councilmember La Romanos.
Pan and Joanne.
Councilmember Marks.
Makon and Janelle.
Councilmember Tovar.
Makon and Janelle.
And I am Makon and Janelle. So that is four for Joanne. One, two, three, four, five for Makon and one, two, three, four, five for Janelle. Is that what you get, Shawna?
Yes, it is, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so those two seats will go to Makon and Janelle. Library Commission, one seat. Councilmember Armandaris.
Oh, there's only one seat?
Yes.
Oh, I thought there was two. Patricia Reinhardt.
Okay, councilmember Braco.
Victoria.
Councilmember Hilton.
Victoria.
Councilmember La Romanos.
Linda.
Councilmember Marks.
Patricia.
Councilmember Tovar. Oh, I didn't hear you, councilmember. You're on mute.
Sorry, I said Linda.
Linda, okay. And I'm going with Victoria. They were all good. This is so hard. So that's I know. There's two for Linda, three for Victoria and two for Patricia. So that's, so Victoria gets it. For all of you listening, please understand you are all wonderful.
You're all wonderful. It's hard.
And we have only one seat for the Physically Challenged Board of Appeals too, so we can, I'll include that in the motion then. So do you want me to read the motion, Shawna, or do you want to read, read? Well, I guess I need a motion and a second first, right? Okay, so do I have a motion and a second to approve what we just did and then we'll restate it?
So move.
Okay. Okay, councilmember La Romanos, seconded by councilmember Marks to approve. Do you want me to restate it? Do you want to try?
That was me, mayor. I seconded.
Oh, sorry, councilmember Armandaris has a second.
I can read it, Madam Mayor. Melanie Reynison to the Arts and Culture Commission. Christopher Demers and Ismail Saleem to the Building Board of Appeals. Makon Gupta and Janelle Venezuela to the Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization Committee. Victoria Conversen to the Library Commission and Mary Drummond to our Physically Challenged Board of Appeals.
All right, roll call vote. Rebecca Armandaris.
Yes.
Dion Braco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Peter La Romanos.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Brett Tovar.
Yes.
Marie Blankley.
Yes.
All right, that was unanimous. Moving on to item C. Again, thank you all who applied. Acceptance of Gilroy Little League Ballpark Fund donation in the amount of $200,000. Sorry, staff report will be Jimmy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This item before you is one of the occasional really fun ones we get to do. This is a lot of work by Jack McPhillips, Ed Wilson Senior and Kristy Miranda of the Gilroy Little Ball, Little League Ballpark Foundation. Think of the fireworks booths and other fundraising activities they've done over the years. What they're asking us to do is to accept the money that they've collected, will hold it on their behalf. And then when the Gilroy Little League as projects or other capital types of things to do that would improve facilities for our youth softball and or Little League, as long as the city and the Little League agree on the project, then the city will disperse the funds to them. There's really not much cost here to the city to hold on to it, and it's not that unusual for us to do these kinds of things. We've done it for the museum as well, just because we we have the continuity. And so with that, I would ask the council approve and accept the donation of the $200,000, which will be kept in separate accounting and and separate funds in order to, you know, segregate the the financials. So I'd be happy to answer any questions for you. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions of the council? Just raise your hand. I can see you all. Okay, any comments from the public? Oh, wait, Dion Braco, councilmember Braco.
Jimmy, do we really have to approve this every time? It doesn't make any sense. Who's going to say, no, we're not going to accept your $200,000?
Yes, you do have to approve it. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It's bureaucracy, Mr. Mr. Braco.
All right, do we have any comments from the public? If you would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand or dial star nine now. Madam Mayor, we have no public comments on this item. Okay, I'm asking for a motion then and a second from anybody. Councilmember Braco, councilmember La Romanos, that's what I saw first. Okay, to accept a donation from the Gilroy Little League Ballpark Fund in the amount of $200,000 for the purposes outlined in the donation agreement and authorize the city administrator to execute the agreement.
Go ahead.
Roll call vote. Rebecca Armandaris.
Yes.
Dion Braco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Peter La Romanos.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Brett Tovar.
Yes.
Marie Blankley.
Yes.
Phew, all right, now not nearly as much fun comes item ten. Fiscal year 2021 mid-year budget update. Approval of increasing fiscal year 2021 revenue and appropriations by $35,648 in the Measure B Fund 216 and acceptance of the investment report for the quarter ended September 2020. And Jimmy, I think you're giving the staff report, right? Jimmy, are you on?
Sorry about that. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do want to recognize the efforts of interim finance director Sydney Murphy and the finance team for really putting together this this information for you to consider. When we went through the fiscal recovery plan about seven or eight months ago, we did tell council that we'd be back to report on that to give you information to let you know how things are going. So this is, this is, yes, a mid-year budget update, but especially more significant than maybe others we've done due to the timing and doing, due to the the impact of the the COVID-19 pandemic. We have three items for you tonight and one is the review. And this is really for counsel, the first step of the budget process, and it's also the first step of your strategic planning. You will have many tough decisions to consider and many priorities to sort through. And the the really the focus of staff right now is to get you the financial information that you need in order to assist you in in making those deliberations. So this is really the first step of those two processes and we'll be building on this one as well. Then there's a very small mid-year budget adjustment. We're only asking for approval of one and I'll explain that in a second. And then for you to receive the quarterly investment report and I'll be talking to you in this a little bit as well. As a quick, you know, recap, the fiscal recovery plan was adopted in June 2020 after numerous meetings of the City Council to evaluate the city's revenues and expenditures and impacts of not only COVID-19, but also the city's $8 million ongoing structural deficit. That deficit was much smaller, but we were aware of that in the in the five-year forecast and council knew that it was at some point going to have to to address it. The fiscal recovery plan was was very hard on the entire organization and the community. But as your obligation to ensure that we have a structurally sustainable fiscal operation, you know, many decisions had to be made, including the elimination of two departments, elimination of vacant positions, employee layoffs, furloughs and labor concessions from executives and unrepresented employees and then three of our four organized bargaining groups. So the the solutions came from every angle, from almost every group and and all were impacted in one way or another. Well, since we've had that plan in place in June twentieth, the one of the caveats that we had to the the plan was that we expected the economic conditions would begin returning around July 2020, July 1st, 2020, and we know that that simply just didn't happen. And so it did impact our plan, but the results are strikingly similar to what we expected, just a little bit different way and how we got there. March seventeenth will mark the one-year anniversary since City Hall ceased in-person operations. And we have certainly learned how to do things differently, utilize technology. But just like council would very much like to get back to in-person meetings, many of us would like to get back to work in the office and to be able to collaborate with our colleagues outside of Zoom or WebEx or or things like that. We know the vaccine has been distributed. It's 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 on its way. And that is really what we're focusing our hopes on now. It will take several months, as Chief Wyatt has explained, to impact the pandemic, but also for the economy to recover and to get back to what we are most used to experiencing. The 2020 financial assumptions, the most significant part of our financial assumptions on the fiscal recovery plan was a 30% reduction annual sales tax, which is about $5 billion annually. We get about 20 million in sales tax, eight, nineteen, twenty, and so we expected around five. And then we expected 11% growth in fiscal year 21. As you can see in just a couple of slides, we we got that not right in the timing, but the dollar amounts are very close to what we expected. We knew there'd be significant reductions in transit hotel tax. We've seen that. We also expected reductions in building and permit activity. But lastly, we expected a stable property business license and utility user taxes. So I'm going to show you what what we expected in 2020 and what we we know now in February of 2021. We ended up with a 21% reduction in third quarter sales tax, which is pretty close to alignment for what we expected. But what we didn't expect is that it would continue into 2021. So although we assumed 30%, it was 21%. We were realizing that it's going to carry on in this current fiscal year. We did have continued reduction in transient hotel tax, TOT. But ironically, we didn't have reductions in building permit activity. In fact, we had the opposite. We had increases. And so that was primarily due to more than likely a low financing cost development activity that was optimistic that we would eventually return, but also housing demand and and people finishing their projects. So ironically, we unfortunately did have to reduce our community development staffing levels. But the permit activity really didn't drop in the way that we've we were expecting. We did have stable property and business license taxes and that was good news. We we still don't expect any reduction of property. As you can tell by home prices in the area, they're they're not, they're not going down. They're going up. And then utility user taxes are slightly down and I I don't tend to blame that on COVID-19 as more as the erosion of that type of tax in general. People are not using cable TV, things like that as much, and so those taxes have had a steady decline do that. But we really still don't know is when the economic recovery is to begin. But the one the one thing we've learned is that economists have told us that this is a much different type of recession than anyone has ever seen. One, because it was absolutely immediate. And then the thought is is that the recovery will be quicker than usual because of the, you know, the type of environment we're in. It's an economy that is struggling in some ways just because of our restriction to COVID-19. So the pattern for recovery will be different than what most of us have seen before. The next slide I want to take you into is the city's five-year forecast, and this is really where we see how the two years have kind of meshed together and how things have how the two years have kind of meshed together and how things have worked out a little bit differently. In the red circle is how we ended fiscal year 20, and we haven't reported the beginning fund or the year-end fund balance yet, but we will soon with the audit report. And I don't expect that number to have a significant impact or be significantly different into what you see here. It will, it won't be a change in what you you see in our fiscal health. But the operating margin for last year was $7.3 million. That is money that we spent that we had to come out of our reserves. And so that was not a surprise. That was expected. But what's different is in year two, we did expect that we would be close to break even in fiscal year 21, and we know now that we'll probably be about $3 million in the negative. So the two years themselves haven't really changed. It just, we expected more of a deficit in year one and did not have as large, but will continue that into fiscal year 21. The the thing that really stands out for us, though, when we do long-term planning, is the out years. The fiscal year 22, 23, and 24 years show that the city doesn't have a lot of extra money just laying around, and we don't expect to. This assumes healthy recovery, assumes growth in sales taxes. And again, if our next sales tax report or the COVID, you know, strains delay our recovery, this chart will change. But this is what we believe right now. This is the information we have. And as we go through budgeting with council, we'll update this to get our third quarter. I'm sorry, our second quarter of sales tax information, in which is the Christmas period, which is our largest sales tax time of the year. So that that's a very important one that you'll have at your your for your information prior to budget adoption. The second part that I want to talk about that I think is equally important to the five-year is the how our reserves are performing. And and as you know, we have a 20% minimum reserve requirement, and that's for operational types of needs. And I like to equate it to the city's insurance policy. If we have a natural disaster, if we have something catastrophic that immediately needs cash, and we can't wait for anyone else or anything else, we have this money in the bank and we can spend it as necessary. And so for both years, we will meet our minimum reserve amounts. The the part that gets a little different is the economic uncertainty reserve. And this this fund has performed exactly as council designed it years ago. And it is for sudden economic changes or downfalls, a recession that's immediate. And so as you can see, we burned through about $3.5 million of that reserve last year. We expected to spend all of it last year, but we won't. But this year, we will extinguish the rest of it and will be left with only a few hundred thousand dollars. And that's essentially close to zero because we're essentially one sales tax report away or a lower revenue away from using up the rest of that reserves. So we definitely use this fund as as appropriate. But one thing that is not in the economic financial recovery plan is how to replenish this. We do have a fiscal policy that requires us to replenish the fund, and that's something we'll have to talk about as we go through the budget process. Okay, the other bit of news that we received here recently is that as you watch finances and you watch investments, you always wonder what that does to our pension liabilities. We did realize about a $10 million increase in the last year due to CalPERS. And so that will eventually be reflected in our rates going forward. And then in this year in 2020, CalPERS only returned 4.7%. So they assume a rate of 7% annually, and the question I have received is, well, if the rest of the stock market is doing so well, why isn't CalPERS? And the answer is the type of investments that they choose. Some of their big losses has become because has become because of their aggressiveness, and they have modified their portfolio and investment strategies to try to minimize the amount of losses. But you know, you know, finance 101 is when you take lower risk, you receive, you know, the opportunity for less gains. This is a topic that as as staff will bring to council and the strategic planning component. It'll be staff initiated for us to talk about about ways that we may be able to address this. You know, the finance world is very creative, and some new methods and mechanisms have been brought forth and adopted by other cities to look at these liabilities and how to fund them going on. So we will certainly talk more about that in the future. I really want to state that the summary of this entire report is that, you know, our expenditures will be under budget most likely at the end of the year. And so at this point, we were telling council, we're going to stay the course. And the fiscal recovery plan is working. It has achieved its intended results. But it it's reliant on what we know right now. And so we feel no reason to make any adjustments to the plan, no reason to do any further reductions, but knowing that as soon as we do see information that is contrary, we will certainly communicate that with council and be before you to discuss. The other thing is that our economic uncertainty reserves are depleted, and so we do not have that soft landing opportunity again, should a big hit happen to the economy. That enabled council last time to take about five or six months to really work through financial issues while we were burning through those reserves. Those reserves are not there. So I do caution council that we need to talk about how we can replenish those. The risk, ironically said second quarter sales tax report, that's the second quarter of the fiscal year, but the fourth quarter sales tax report is the Christmas holiday shopping time. And so we have no indications yet about how that will look. That lagged significantly. And then the second major risk is ongoing COVID-19 impacts. And as you've heard, there are various strains to the virus, and those are presenting challenges. And so, you know, that being said, that could have a significant impact on us. That does conclude my report, and I know you'll have questions, but I'm going to go ahead and introduce the additional two topics, and then I'll finish my presentation at that point. The budget amendment of $35,643 in Measure B funds, that's non-general fund, and that is for bicycle pedestrian outreach, education, and encouragement activities. This is money that is available through Measure B, and so we're asking council to approve the expenditure in that in that fund. And then to receive the investment report for the third quarter of fiscal year 2020. I think as you've probably seen in the staff report, we we returned approximately 1% you know, in a rate of return, and that's that's consistent with the local agency investment funds. So the money that our our money goes into is is performing a little under a percentage point for the third quarter. So no surprises there, considering, again, just like Leith and CalPERS, those investment strategies tend to be fairly conservative. And so you're just not going to have a high return, a return rate. That does conclude my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. All right, going down council. I see Councilmember LaRoma Yos has his hand raised, so I'll give Rebecca Armandaris a break from being the first one all the time. Okay, Councilmember LaRoma Yos.
Thank you, Mayor. Jimmy, thank you as always for the detailed report. It is like a splash of cold water in the face, but I appreciate knowing the truth and kind of what we have to do to address it. I might have missed this, but in terms of last time, and by I by last time, I mean last year, the city did receive federal and state funding to address some of the impacts of COVID. I know it's hard to predict what might be coming down the road from either Sacramento or DC, but is there any sense that you might have for any financial resources coming to the city that we might be able to use to address some of this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. LaRoma Yos. The new administration, especially at the federal level, has made it a priority to try to get funds to local entities and counties and such. And in what form that is, we have no idea. That could be in the form of additional CARES Act funding and such. And so we're all kind of anxious sitting in our seat, but I know President Biden has stated that that is a priority for him to work through Congress and get some funding. I have not heard anything additional from the state at this time. They have their own, you know, budget issues and such, so I have nothing I can verify for you. But I do think we will see something in one way, shape, or form. It will not most likely impact our operational budget. I can imagine it's most likely to be some kind of pass-through funding like we did with rental assistance and small business loans and things like that. That tends to be what we see in these situations, but we're we're learning a lot about things we've not seen before. So I'm cautiously optimistic.
Understood. We'll keep our fingers crossed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Armandaris, do you have any questions of Jimmy?
No, I'll pass right now. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Bracco.
No, not right now.
Councilmember Hilton.
No questions. Thank you, Jimmy, and thank you staff for putting this together.
Councilmember Marks.
No questions.
Councilmember Tovar.
Just thank you, Jimmy, and city staff. I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, I would like to just kind of piggybacking on what Councilmember LaRoma Yos said. I remember the work that we as a council and staff went through to try and get money for the what we had to pay for the Garlic Festival shooting, all that extra cost, and we never got anything to reimburse us for those costs. So it's certainly not something you can bank on, you know. It's it's money's out there that we hopefully will get, but like in that case, we certainly did not. And for Gilroy, that was absolutely a travesty, a devastation, and a lot of extra money. Anyway, thank you for this report. I would like to point out for council that when you see something like an operating margin, you know, like in figure five in the report, that's telling us how much our our general fund expenditures were more than our general fund revenue, right? And that it's a clear indication of how we're spending beyond the revenue that we that we take in in that account, and that's that is therefore what comes out of reserves and how we go forward. Okay, well, if there are no other questions, I guess it's time for any public comment. Is anyone from the public wanting to speak on this?
If you'd like to speak on this topic, please raise your hand or dial star nine now. Madam Mayor, there are no public comments on this item.
Okay, this is a receives the mid-year budget report. But my agenda said, do I need a motion for this? I don't, Jimmy or Andy, is this something you want to motion on, or is this just a receive report?
Madam Mayor, the first item is a receive report only. The second one, which is the budget amendment, would be to have a resolution amending the budget. And then the third is just receive the investment report.
Right.
Andy, were you saying something different?
I'm sorry, I think Jimmy and I were saying the same thing. We need a motion on the resolution. Yes.
Okay, so we'll move on then to, does anybody have any questions in particular on the the $35,648 of Measure B funds? If if not, I'll take a motion.
I'll motion.
Seconded.
Okay, and it's I don't have separate public comment there. Okay, I'm sorry, the motion was made by?
Hilton.
Hilton and seconded by?
LaRoma Yos.
LaRoma Yos, thank you, to adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Gilroy, amending the fiscal year 2020, 21 budget by $35,648 in the Measure B Fund 216, and appropriating proposed expenditure amendments. Roll call vote, please.
This is Resolution 2021-05, adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Gilroy, amending the fiscal year 2020, 21 budget by $35,648 in the Measure B Fund 216, and appropriating proposed expenditure amendments. Rebecca Armandaris.
Yes.
Dion Bracco. Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Peter LaRoma Yos.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar.
Yes.
Mary Blankley.
Yes.
Yeah, I know what happened to Councilmember Bracco. Did he drop off? Okay, then that's six to zero to one. Is that how you call that?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay. And the next is just receiving the investment report for the quarter to 2020. There's no need for a motion there, right?
That's correct. Our default circumstance in this occasion is the reports are received. If for some reason the council really objected to them, you could vote in some way not to receive them, but the the default without needing a motion is simply to receive them.
We try that at BTA, and they tell us we can't do that. So it's like, okay.
Hey, you know, they've got they've got a little more bureaucracy than we do. They have.
Oh, boy, do they. Okay, all right. Thanks, everyone. We're moving on then to item 11, which is city administrators' reports.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I wanted to update you on something I discussed at the last city administrator report and spent a lot of time on this over the last couple of weeks. As you well know, the trash in the the greater Gilroy facility has been growing and becoming more and more of an issue. And I've heard from all council members and many residents about what we can do about it. Since last September, the city has been attempting to contact Caltrans in order to pick up garbage, especially along Sixth Street to 10th Street on Highway 101. And during that entire time, we contacted Caltrans. They stated that due to CDC requirements, they were not allowed to pick up garbage because it could disrupt encampments. We, the city, argued that the the encampments themselves are on one side of the fence. Most of the garbage is on another, so you could pick up that garbage and not disturb anybody. We got nowhere with that argument. About a month ago, I reached out to Assemblymember Rivas's office to see if he could assist, and his field representative was able to get in contact with Caltrans and state that they would be able to pick up the trash. So at that point, it was our understanding, and it was included in the city's own work order, that the only thing the city was requesting was garbage removal along 101. Last Friday, Caltrans, as we knew it, started posting notices. And in those notices, they indicated that they would not only be picking up trash, they would be sweeping the areas of encampments, which is not what the city of Gilroy asked for. And so that created some frustration understandably, and I spent the week communicating with some of our nonprofit partners about what we could do to ensure that did not occur. I did reach out again to Assemblymember Rivas's office this morning, and as usual, they were extremely responsive and very helpful, and were able to get ahold of Caltrans. And again, Caltrans reiterated, even though the notices said they were sweeping, they were not sweeping. They were only doing garbage removal. So that is the plan for tomorrow. I do apologize for anyone that believes that, you know, we misled you or whatever, but I can tell you our frustrations many times are similar to yours and that, you know, we don't control these organizations. We can't tell them what to do. We can always ask, and and sometimes we don't get a response, and when we do, we have to elevate that. But I do want to assure you, I can assure you that they won't do encampments, but I can assure you that everything the city has done is to to ensure that that is not our message. So thank you, Madam Mayor. That that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy, do you have a report?
I could say something, ma'am.
Sorry, Councilmember Armandaris has a question.
Sure, I just want to thank Andy and the city staff for responding and for working with Caltrans in this way, and also for helping us sort through the frustration of getting that notice that some of our residents were going to be swept during this time. And so I I for one, I'll be out there. I know the sweep starts early in the morning, so I'll be out there at seven tomorrow morning to just keep an eye out and see, hopefully, that they indeed follow through and only take out garbage and and not displace any residents. And thank you again for your work.
Okay, city attorney report.
Yeah, no report at this time.
Okay, and that brings us into the wording that always confuses me about going into closed session.
There you go.
Okay, so we need.
We're now going to go into a closed session for a conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section 54956.8 and Gilroy City Code section 17A8A2. The property is 7491 Railroad Avenue, the Creamery Building. Negotiators are Jimmy Forbes and Karen Garner. The other party to negotiations is Mark Garrison, and under negotiations are price and terms of payment. We do not need a vote to go into closed session. We now need to take public comment, if any, then adjourn to closed session, and then, once we are in closed session, take a vote on whether or not to remain in closed session, and that vote is a reportable action.
Okay, so do we have any public comments?
If you'd like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand or dial star nine now. Madam Mayor, we have no public comments on this item.
Okay, council, may we go straight into closed session? It's not that late, or does anybody need a break?
Let's do it. Let's go.
Good. All right, so we need a motion to go into closed session?
No, we don't. We just go and we don't.